Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first budget planning work session for FY22. Thank you all for being here. We have the agenda, Mr. Teneli, if you want to go ahead and put that up. And we'll now call tonight's meeting to order so we can jump right in and get to the conversation of today. So this is the agenda. And it was shared with the council and posted. Are there any questions or comments from the council regarding the agenda? With the idea being we'll approve the agenda. There's no old business. Again, this is focused on FY22 budget planning. All right, so I'm hearing no objections. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for tonight's budget work session?
Don't move.
Moved by Councilmember Lundie, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mendoza, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of I.
I.
Any nays? The eyes have it, thank you so much. So at this time, Mr. Teneli, I will turn the meeting over to you.
Okay, Mayor and Council, if it's okay, I'm gonna go ahead and share the draft budget that we talked about at the last work session. And I'll go ahead and put this up on screen. Mayor, as you said, I'm gonna try to find the PDF version, so maybe you can. We'll see if this is read a little bit better. If you can. So this is the. I'm sorry, one second. Okay, so I'm gonna be facing over here, is that two screens? So I'm not, my camera's over here, so just so everybody knows, okay? So. Can everybody see this okay?
Yes.
Okay. First section is a summary. Let me know if this looks okay so far.
It does, yes, we can.
Okay, okay, because I see it one way on my screen, also make sure it shows up. You know, when it goes all out there to everybody. Okay, so. First, okay, so this is the summary FY21 actuals through the third quarter. And this is through March 31st. I haven't updated this yet for April 30th because the month is still being closed out. It takes seven to 10 days to close a month out, meaning it takes a little bit of time for all the invoices dated in April. All the expenses to be realized in April, so you just don't cut it off right there. So that's why it takes a few days after the end of the month to close. But this is, and also wanted to talk about the same financials already discussed briefly at the April work session. So. These are the same financials. And this is through the third quarter, again, this through March 31st. The first column is the actuals. The second column is budget. And the third column is the percent expended or realized of the budget with revenues. It's a percent realized with expenditures or expenses. It's a percent utilized or spent. And then the blue column over here is the FY22 budget. And this is going to follow through all the departments. I'm just saying the plate right here now for setting the table, I'm sorry, for how it's gonna look through the rest of the budget. And the final column, having a little bit smaller type here, is the increase or decrease of the FY22 budget over the FY21 budget. So we're gonna go through, we're gonna go through the revenues tonight and try to pick up as many of the departments as we can with time allotted. With budget, some people like to cut this up. It's a lot to talk about, lots to digest. I think it's best to break this up into at least two sessions. If we get all done one, great, but it's kind of good to break it up into two sessions and come back with questions about the first section that we talked about. And also, please ask questions all the way through this. I'm gonna talk until you all raise your hand in. Since I'm facing over here, Mayor, if you see any questions, just call out, please. So I stop talking and you can pick those up. So. The FY21 budget, you can see where it's, I'm gonna round everything off here. We're at 6.7 million in revenues. And we've realized about 82% of the revenues through the end of March. For expenses, same thing, about 6.7 expenses. But we've only realized about 59%. We've only utilized about 59% of budget in March. You see that there's quite a big difference there. We're going into a large surplus here projected for FY21. And that's mostly related to staffing. It's staffing positions that have not been filled. And that's a big driver, but also things like the grants that we have on books that have not been expended yet, or their projects are not completed yet. So things like that all play into it. And again, this is three quarters through the fiscal year. So we've seen this, we've talked about this, let's talk about the FY22 budget. Something else that's pretty important here, what's missing here? What's a major thing here that's missing? It is a COVID relief package. Town Bladensburg is set to receive close to $7.9 million for the COVID relief package. And that's gonna be dispersed sometime, maybe this month. I'm thinking in June for expenses through December 31, 2024. Now, that's not part of this budget here. We're gonna make that a whole separate budget, a whole, because we don't know the guidelines yet. There's, we're still waiting for the federal guidelines, there's a big rollout, you know, everybody high fiving, but you know, it's, we gotta wait until we get detailed guidelines on how we can use this money. That's what everybody's waiting on, and that's coming very soon. So that will be whole new discussions from now until a couple of years from now. So, but let's talk about our operating budget, what we do know about right now, the uncertainties. Now, we're gonna talk about the revenues. This may look a little small, you tell me when you all can read this, okay? How's this looking?
Yeah, it's bigger, but you do have to scroll back. This looks good to me, but council members, can you see the screen okay? Or do you need it a little larger?
My hand was raised.
Okay, Councilmember route?
Thank you, Mr. Teneli, and I understand we're still waiting on guidance for the budget for 7.9, a little bit like 7.9. So just for the informational purposes, I think you said that, so is it gonna be included in this budget or not? The reason why, do we know the allocation? It's not all gonna be allocated at one time, is that correct?
Correct. I think it's gonna be half upfront, and then, again, I'm waiting for, we're waiting for some real concrete data. When this does go in, we're gonna have, we're gonna obviously have to amend the budget. For something like this, almost, I wanna create its own budget standalone. It's gonna be part of the town funds, yes, but something like this, I wanna account for it separately. So it's not commingled over here with our normal operating funds. If we had to make transfers from here into our operating funds, but I'd rather have it standalone by itself. Especially because it's gonna overlap multiple fiscal years. So. You know, let's just say, for example, that hypothetical, purely hypothetical, let's say we had 10 new positions in public safety, okay? I would put this over here under this budget versus, you know, running through this public safety budget here. I'm also gonna go talk to the auditor and ask for their guidance as well, just so everything is upfront, and especially because we're gonna have to have an additional audit on these funds, it's called a single audit. So there's gonna be a normal audit that we go through, and then what's called a yellowbook audit, I believe they still call it that, where they just audit the federal funds and the programming side of it as well. So that's why I wanna keep these as separate as possible, and almost like a separate, I don't wanna say like a separate entity, but you know, it's all Bladensburg, but. We're gonna account for it separately. And I'm really, really, you know, it's kind of, you know, they rolled this out, what, March 11th or March 12th, and then it's kind of like silence for a little while, and you know, some question and answer period, but we're really waiting for the OMB to release the final regs and everything. And then once we do, you know, it's up to Mayor and Council, we gotta come back and, you know, come up with a spending plan, and not just the one year, but a multi-year spending plan as well. Answer your question? Okay. Revenues. Okay, so the largest part of our revenues are real estate taxes. Or as you hear, it's called taxes on real property. The FY21 budget was 3.7 million. We walked that back about 6%, if you remember last budget year, because we thought, you know, it was during the very height of COVID, and we thought people were gonna have difficulty paying the taxes. So it backed off this amount for uncollectible taxes, basically. Properties that they just could not collect on, people could not make the payment, the tax payments on. So. We walked that back 6%. In the meantime, the assessments, the FY22 assessments from the state increased 3.5%. So that's why there's a 10% increase here between FY21 budget and the FY22 budget. And speaking with the auditors, they said if they are getting assessments and their county is gonna collect the taxes, assume they will collect 100% of the taxes. So we're not gonna walk any back for any uncollectible amounts, because the county does have, I mean, the county can go through a foreclosure process in order to recapture unpaid taxes. So that's why the, it increased 10% because we walked it back 6% last year, and it increased 3.5%, and that's rounding, so that's why it's 10%, it's at 9.5%. And this is also assuming that we are keeping the current tax rate. Now, the current tax rate, because of the 3.5% increase, the constant yield says we are collecting additional $132,000 in taxes. Because assessments go up, remember the whole constant yield discussion, assessments go up, you should drop your tax rate, so the revenues remain the same as previous year. And we are having our constant yield hearing at next week's Mayor and Council meeting, where we do the official constant yield hearing, and then we've advertised that in the local paper, it's posted outside. So next week will be the official constant yield hearing. Business personal property tax, I was, I attended the Maryland Government Finance Officer Association Spring Conference on Friday, and the big thing was about projections, economic outlook, what's everybody going to do with budgeting? Budgeting's all over the place right now, because, you know, things that weren't supposed to happen did happen, like everybody thought the economy was gonna go down, but actually it rebounded a lot stronger than everybody anticipated. So things like that. What they're seeing with business personal property tax, business personal property tax is the tax assessed on business personal property, meaning furniture and fixtures, inventories at the end of the year, at the end of 1231, except for car dealerships. They're not taxed on their inventory at the end of the year. But anything that the business has on hand at the end of the year is taxed at a rate of .0209 or $2.09 per $100 of assessed property. What does that equate to? Roughly, we're, the business personal property, here's a crazy thing, okay? Again, we walked back the FY21 budget on this, thinking that, you know, COVID's gonna hit the businesses hard, and it's just gonna, you know, it's gonna be a downturn in the economy. So we projected $700,000 through nine months of the year, through three quarters of the year, we've already gone over, we've already collected more than budget, and we're only three quarters way through the year. And this is based on your 1231, your calendar year, 2020 tax returns. So. So it's pretty solid. And with the businesses are backed up within, I mean, it's taken them, the inventory has gone down some because it can't keep things in stock, but it's still projecting that it's gonna stay relatively constant. So I had this business personal property at about $36.5 million. That's where it's been about for the last two or three years, and that's a lot of business personal property in town of Bladensburg. Yeah, I think one square mile, we have almost $40 million of business personal property in town. So businesses are, now, we do have our three or four or five main businesses here that that we're thankful they're here, and they have a lot of employment and a lot of personal property. So they are the economic drivers as well, but it's all the smaller businesses as well that seemingly are doing well. The ones that hardest hit are, of course, the hospitality businesses, and I'll get into that next. The, so the total property taxes, including real property, residential, and business personal property, is a 10% increase, I projected, for FY22. Again, that's because we walked back the FY21 projections, but you can see they're already surpassing that. Emissions and amusement tax, same kind of thing. We walked that back a little bit, we kept this budget around $15,000, somewhere between $10,000 and $15,000 last two or three years. But the last couple of years, and especially last, this current year, you can see, we're already 160% of the budget. And that is the tax the state collects for your corn-operated machines, which are your laundromats, red box machines, everything else, rentals, and also cover charges when they were happening at restaurants and other establishments. And those are taxed at different rates, and we get a breakdown every quarter from the state, and that is remitted by the state. We don't do anything with those taxes. The business personal property tax is the only tax that we actually bill out and collect, but that's based on when the state assessment office sends us the assessment on the business personal property. So the state doesn't collect it, they tell us what to bill and collect, and then we take it from there. So that, I increased that one to 25,000. I'm sorry, I skipped the income tax, it was tucked away in there, that was very important. Any questions so far? Revenues take a little bit to go through, because the apartment budgets are pretty much the same, you know, you have salaries and the same operating costs. Revenues are unique by themselves, so that's why it's gonna take the bulk of the time on the revenues here, and it's also very important. Income tax. We are, we budgeted 467.5, again, we walked that back, thinking, you know, I say the same thing over and over again, because of COVID, and we've already collected almost three quarters of that, and that's before this year's tax filings. So expect a big bump when this year's tax filings happen, which unfortunately aren't gonna be announced, I think mid-June, they extended that out again, it was May, I think it's mid-June now. I did go ahead and increase this, and this was a big discussion Friday at our conference, and I talked to my counterparts in the counties and other municipalities as well, they have not seen drop off in income taxes. This was the main part that everybody was concerned about, because they thought that everybody, you know, with being out of work, what no one planned on was a quick transition to teleworking, and businesses kept going. Now, the large unemployment rates, we had somebody from, maybe the Bank of America, I forget, but the industries that hit the hardest were the hospitality industries. And also, you're, then I hate to put it this way, and I'll just say it the same way they did, but the unemployment hit the lower-wage workers the hardest. And those were the ones that were put out of work, because those industries were directly impacted and closed down when our business, when other businesses found a way to stay open. And there are also the lower-wage earners and the, and the ones that paid the smallest amount of tax. But I think they're just as important as everybody else. I mean, you know, you hate to just put that into a numbers format, you know, and talking about people losing their jobs and everything. Because, I mean, a lot of people struggle and everything. But the higher income, the higher wage earners, the professional industries, they all kept going, and they're the ones that are still paying the taxes and everything. And they found a way to make business work through COVID. And the unemployment there was not as large, nearly as large as the hospitality industry. So that's, so they're, so it's all over the place, they're saying, keep it.
Mr. Teneli, quick question there, sorry, I don't know if you can see my hand up, but.
No, I didn't, I'm sorry, I'm over here booking.
It's all good. No worries. So with the delayed tax filing date, my question is, when do you anticipate those income tax payments coming in? Because normally with, you know, the general April deadline, there's what a six-week lag of people filing and then getting their payments in, but now that it's pushed out to June, when do you think we'll see that revenue? Because I'm just trying to figure out, when will we be at the point where we've realized all of that income tax?
Let's go ahead, let me show you something real quick. One second, let me go to last year's filings. Local tax, local tax, local tax. If it is for, we get an E-file from the state, a payment file, and if it says, June income tax filing, for auditing purposes, if we actually receive that in July, it's actually receivable in June, we're gonna, that's gonna be booked as revenues in June, because it's for June collections, and if they pay it in July, we still have to recognize it in June. So.
That makes sense, and that's why I was asking, given our fiscal year closes June 30th, it's, you know, around that timeframe. So any other questions from the council? Again, I apologize, because for some reason I can't see any raised hands. Normally, you get the little icon, but I'm not seeing that.
I'm trying to pull up a payment coupon here from the state, and it is going slow, I think I'm doing too much on this side here, so it's a large file. Okay, I can't pull it up here, but I can show you the whole page, but anyway, it is based on the actual filing months, and I think we talked about that during the auditor presentation, because it's, it's, I'll find it for you, I'll find it for you. Even if they put the tax filing date back to July, it's still an FY21 tax, so it'd still be recognized. So this one was obviously a point of, you know, the first speaker said, I don't care what's here from the next four speakers, no one knows about this. And the next speaker says, you know, we have really solid data, you know, so they were, you know, so I would say the consensus is it's gonna be as close or a little bit better than previous years. Oh, and also, because, I don't know if you remember, about two years ago, they added a box on the Maryland 508 or 506 form for to file your personal income tax, where you put a check mark for, if you live inside the municipality. Before, it was just taking the Bladensburg zip code. Or not even, who'd just say they live in Prince George's County on the second page. Now, you have to put a checkbox on what municipality you actually live in, so now we're capturing more actual revenues for people in Bladensburg, if that makes sense. So. We had to push that out again, remind folks about that, but that's been out for a couple of years, so hopefully it's been a normal part of the filing now. Licenses and permits. Local businesses, local business license, these are for your businesses in town, and also for your apartment buildings, rental licenses. The county also collects a license, the same license as well, it's a county, it's a county license, and they send a portion of the revenues collected for the license of Bladensburg, not all. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, I see that we're doing good finally on the amusement and admission amusement tax, because for a while there, we weren't doing good when both places were closed.
Yeah, and what I'm finding out is the I'm just making an assumption, the corn-operated machines increased quite a bit, I assume people are home more and washing their clothes and doing red box rentals, I don't know. So, you know. Just some things you don't think about, and when you see it, you're like, oh my gosh, you know, so it's, but I mean, it's all important, it's all very important. The cable franchise fees. I did do a decrease here, because, okay, let's back up a little bit. These are pre-negotiated by the county with Verizon and Comcast Communications, and this is the franchise fees they give to the municipalities and to the counties to allow the cable providers to run their infrastructure through our town. So these are pre-negotiated fees that we sent on a Bladensburg sits through our attorney with the other municipalities in the county, and they all negotiate with Verizon and Comcast. We actually do pay a little bit of attorney fees back to the county for that as well. But I did decrease this amount, and I may walk it back even a little bit more, because people are doing more of streaming services, they're not going through the full cable packages. And it's based on subscribership, it's based on revenues, and we get an audit report from each company to verify that their revenues collected matched the franchise fees. This one, this is the one I'm concerned about, I did 6%, you know, it could stay the same. I mean, people still have full cable packages and streaming services, people are just paying more now for everything, or they could walk it back, but I went a little bit conservative here. State funding, highway user revenues. Why they had this increased, we're gonna realize all the funding, so hopefully, Mr. Hall, our supervisor of public works, is putting together a road improvement plan. We do have quite a few needs. We also have some unspent funds in highway user revenues that we can do some major road projects here in town that we've been holding off on, so, but that's something that'll be discussed with the Mayor and Council at future date, but I want to, but these are the full highway user funds coming into, from the state. I walked it back last year because we didn't think we were gonna be doing that many projects, even though we got $200,000. We defer anything we don't use to the highway user fund to be used in current, in future years. And you have 10 years to use any unused funds, and it goes by year. So let's say we have unused funds from 2019, we'll use those first before we use the FY20 unused highway user funds. Mayor?
So, given more people were teleworking since roughly March of last year, and theoretically that means less fuel was being purchased, did any of the speakers at the conference on Friday mention what they're forecasting in terms of, really?
Yeah, not all.
Okay.
That one didn't make the topic desk. But these are offset by expenses in public works, so this is a, we're not gonna spend more than we received from current year funding. So we only receive, that's a very good point, because people were not driving for a good three to four, six months.
And it's based off the fuel tax, right? So if there's less coming in.
Actually, I did look that up, there is a portion that's based on fuel tax, a larger portion is based on vehicle registrations in town. Actually, I did look that up, there is a a portion of this based on fuel tax, a larger portion is based on vehicle registrations in town. Um, and we get a list um to verify, um, we actually do get a list from the state to verify. All these people are tagged in town, and we go through and just, we don't go through all six thousand or four thousand, you know. We go by streets to make sure all the streets are identified, um, and that's why in code enforcement, you know, uh vehicles have to be tagged. And have to be tagged in state um and working condition, because that helps capture everything for that, for the fuel, for the. How do you say, the registration fees for the state? Hope that answered your question.
It definitely did, I forgot about the registration, so thanks for that.
Oh, and road miles, we we maintain. That's also in the calculation as well, so that's the fixed part. And we actually, Penelope told me how many road miles we have in town. I wish I remembered, uh, Councilmember Mendoza, I don't know i- i- if you know. It was a lot more than you think.
Well, highway user?
Yeah, how many actual road miles are in town? When you're miles.
No, I don't remember that, Sean used to know that.
Yeah, I know, I know. If if you can text Sean, I mean, he'll probably know off the top of his head. Police aid, um, this is the annual grant from the governor's office of crime control and prevention. This is the award amount that I believe we are receiving. Sometimes they they do give us a bump with the additional funding coming down, I don't know how all this funding is going to work, because. Going back to the CARES Relief Act funding, you're allowed to transfer funds to other agencies. Through other governments, through nonprofits and everything, so I don't know if more funding is coming down through here or not, that's just a hypothetical. And then we receive this quarterly from the state. Client disposal fee rebate, this comes in quarterly from the um. From the county, and this is like a thank you payment for using their disposal sites, that's pretty much what it is in a nutshell. We get a a letter every quarter saying, thank you for using, you know, the municipal landfills. Here's your rebate, and it's the same rebate, it's like fifty six, twenty one a quarter, I believe, as part of a ten year agreement. And I'm hoping they do re- renew this agreement, because it does expire at the end of FY twenty two. Bank stock, this is an old thing from nineteen sixty seven, um, we receive this every year. It's a whole harmless agreement to discontinue taxing bank shares. I wasn't around back then, so I don't know what that is, but we receive it every year, and we will continue to receive it. Part of that, bank shares, I assume were taxed heavily, especially the locally owned bank or locally held shares. So first charges, these are what we actually collect as a town, okay? And 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 these are based on, you know, our code, our our codification process and our regs. First one is local fines and fees, these are your code violations and impound fees paid to the town, towing fees. There's budget, twelve thousand, actual seventeen thousand. I'm conservative and kept it thirteen thousand, hopefully these people over here have learned their lesson. And I'm not going to see the big increase again. But just to show you, I mean, we are at one hundred forty six percent of the budget. And that is thanks to our public safety and code enforcement out there doing aggressive enforcement. Copier fees, these are smaller amounts, um, we charge for police reports and um lengthy public information. PIA request. Fingerprinting, this service dropped off a lot, especially during COVID, I mean, you know, not handling people's hands, obviously. So, you know, realistically, yes, it dropped off. We did keep that in here, because we we do have walk-ins for people getting cleared for background checks um for just about everything. Reimbursements, this this dropped off to nothing, what this was, was the main part of the reimbursements were for um. National capital park and planning, um reimbursing us for overtime coverage, providing security over at the community center. We were um. Receiving funding for that with the closures and social distancing, uh, we haven't seen anything yet, I'm not sure if that's. I assume that's going to start again, um, I dropped that down about five thousand. Again, these are more of. I want to say pay-go, but these are more, um, I I want to get a little bit more conservative with, because. Your tax assessments, you know, you you know what are coming in, you know, here is what we go out and um have to generate on our own. Automated traffic enforcement.
Mr. Tenelli, just real quick, I wanted to make sure the council understood, so with the line item that Mr. Tenelli was just discussing. When the community center does the safe summers program, that's where um our officers get compensated. For providing the part-time security there, that's to keep kids off the street during the summers, they can. Be in the community center traditionally before COVID from, say, nine to nine PM to midnight or somewhere along those hours.
Okay, thanks. The au- the automated traffic enforcement, um, this has been in a holding pattern for a while, um, it's a. I want to say the second year it's going on the budget, or third year, um, and and this is for. A traffic enforcement in school zones, um, through cameras and other means. Um, that will be done through a third party, and they will. What's being discussed still is, you know, is the contract, the term, collections, amounts. And trying to have the town being held harmless, um, in previous discussions that we've had with other vendors. Um, you have to pay a certain amount every month per camera or per unit. And if you're not. I- i- if the revenue is not there, you almost have like an unlimited loss. Until your term ends, which could be four years or five years out, so. We're trying to negotiate that now to make sure the town is held harmless, meaning that um. Expenses will not exceed revenues for any vendor for um traffic enforcement. And Chief, if you want to jump in on that too.
Good evening, uh, council and community, uh, yes, that's correct, uh, Mr. Tenelli. Uh, we asked for a neutral neutrality clause to be put in, which means. Uh, that if we don't take in enough to pay the monthly fees for the cameras. Uh, that money that they vendor agreed to hold us harmless and just accept what the cameras did bring in. Um, and that uh it was added into the contract, and we're just waiting on the attorney to send it back to us.
And the revenues I have here are offset by the expenses, again, this is an enforcement measure. Realistically, revenues do exceed expenses. What happens with any revenues that do exceed expenses, it's almost, it's it's going to go into a separate fund. Okay, so it's not just going to sit here in our um, in our operating funds, has to go into a. Separate fund to be used just for public safety purposes, so um I might try not, well, you. You can co-mingle them, but I also want to put them into a separate account, and because. Those are for your one-time public safety expenses, your capital expenses, um, so that'll help things to. Take pressure off of this side of the budget, so it's almost that, it's almost operating like its own entity with the um. Traffic enforcement piece. For the smaller uh things like the um local fines and fees, that's different, but with the traffic enforcement, that's going through a third party. You have a contract, you want to make sure you cover all your expenses through the in the contract, you want to keep those funds just set just for that. And I'll keep the council updated, it'll be a separate department, just like clerk, finance, town administrator, it'll be a separate department on the financials. Other revenues, um, insurance reimbursement. The largest part here is our annual rebates that we do receive from health insurance and for workers' compensation. With the Affordable Care Act, there is a percentage of. On of expenses, projected expenses that 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 come in under the actual healthcare plan costs that get. Brought back to the town. And we don't apply this against the health insurance expense, because it's a revenue, revenues are revenues, expenses are expenses, okay? Uh, they're small amounts compared to the actual health insurance cost, but um every little bit helps. And also reimbursements for insured losses on vehicles and property, so if somebody runs into a fence, does two thousand dollars damage. Their insurance company pays us two thousand dollars, that's where this goes. Bus shelter advertising, uh, we have a contract with a media company. To get a portion of revenues for the bus shelters advertising. They're having a very hard time trying to fill these spots. So what you do see on there, look out here real quick, is more of like public safety announcement type things. Um, that just try to fill the panels, but those don't unfortunately pay anything, and they're having. Just talking to them, they're having a real hard time in Prince George's County. Um, they thought it was going to be like their other markets, and um the the revenues have dropped off. I just don't, they said customers just have not been responsive or seen the return on their investment for this, for the advertising on bus shelters. I told them, work a little bit harder, but I talked to them last year, I haven't talked to them yet um in this calendar year. But that's why I I put a minimal amount in of a thousand dollars. That's something that, you know, we can put our, you know, we can just put town Bladensburg information on there or something at this point. Property rental, uh, this is for the Mango Cafe lease. I kept that constant. They have paid half of it, because we did give them some rental. Relief because of COVID, and they're forced to not do any business. Yes.
If they said we didn't own the place, about how much tax would we get from them?
If we didn't own it?
Yeah.
Um, all depends on what the property is worth. That's the, that's the uh. That's the um. I could I could come up with some figures, you know, if it's worth this, if it's worth this, if it's worth this, you know, so.
I'm just curious, because if we didn't own it, we wouldn't have responsibility, we would just be collecting tax on it.
So it's a point zero zero seven four of wha- whatever the property would be worth, so. That's the magic rate. And we do pay the business personal property taxes uh for that as well. Vehicle deployment, uh, there is a deduction for take home. Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli, um, for the bus shelter advertising. Um, how often are those um contracts negotiated? Just wanted to know, because I know there are other municipalities that are moving from. The regular roll paper behind the thing to more digitalized um system, and so. That could be the reason why there is a reduction in bus shelter advertising, so I wanted to understand more. Um, how often is um that negotiated uh for the purposes of um. You know, being like in the twenty first century, and then secondly, um, forty two thousand dollars is about. A little bit over like three thousand thirty five, it's about thirty five hundred dollars a month for that. Um, and so looking at what the property is worth, also wanting to understand. For similar lots and sizes, what would be um the most appropriate rental rates? Is something uh for consideration as well to answer, to also um accompany or piggyback off of. Councilmember Mendoza's comment, there should be some type of um rental. Uh, I guess study done to further understand. You know, is it, is it a uh like market, market recharging market rent? And what's the best bang for our buck, thank you.
Um, if there is a commercial realtor sometime, uh, you can pay them for what's called a BPO, which is a broker's professional opinion. And they could just give you a um, it's their opinion, they're not going to give you any, like, you know, it's not going to be a long. Okay, so that that's the quick version, okay, they'll give you, you know, just ballpark, what. What the property is worth and how how much rent. That, that's the quick and dirty, you know, to do the actual, you know, to to dive in, that's a. Another study that would be done by um a professional appraiser. And that's something that, yes, of course. And, you know, and um talk about rental rates and use of the property, um, I su- I suggest that one be, you know, be taken in. Into closed session, of course, so. Chief, did you get a hand up? Okay. One second, give me one second. Okay, um. Loan repayment, uh, the two thousand nine, I believe, two thousand ten community forklift loan. Has been fully repaid, so that is no longer going to be on our our revenues. Miscellaneous revenues, um. Small items, receipts, payments or donations, um, things like the shop with the cop donation. Would would go in there, um. Small receipts, like uh sometimes people say, I want to give like four hundred dollars towards, you know, um. Uh, a great, you know, to to helping somebody, and they don't want to do it themselves, so they run through the, run through the town. But but those those are few and far between, but we have to have some sort of revenue account there for them. This one was a big hit, hit to the financials, I mean, um. Two thousand twenty, I think we, I think we received almost one hundred and twenty one thousand dollars of interest. When the interest rates were still pretty high, I'm sorry, is FY twenty? And then has everybody seen, everybody's financing and buy, trying to buy houses, you can't even get a house right now. There's usually a ten to fifteen contracts on a house, because the interest rates are so low. Um, and that's the lending rates, and what all sets low, low lending rates are your. Interest rates on um interest-bearing accounts, our interest-bearing account is through the Maryland Local Government Investment Pool. Um, MLGIP, this is uh through PNC Bank. Chartered through the state legislature back, I want to say, the mid. Late, mid to late eighties or nineties, and that's where a lot of the local governments have their excess funds. If they don't have an investing policy, if we had an investing policy to go ahead and and put money into municipal bonds. Equities, treasuries, we would go ahead and do that, but si- since we do not, this is the safe. Investment through the um. Local government insurance uh investment pool. Unfortunately. You know, we're missing out on a hundred thousand dollars, you know, we're, we don't have the extra hundred thousand dollars of interest income. Because on average, uh, we keep between six and seven million dollars in that account. And that's for various reasons, that is from previous year's fund balances, your property taxes up here. Your property taxes up here, your, your, your real estate taxes, everybody pays them and most people pay them in September. We get a big lump of money, like say, three million dollars in September, but we have no expenses against it. So it goes over into that investment pool account until, and then we, then we transfer out as we, as we use it every month. So that was the big hit. Grants, I don't have anything here yet for grants budgeted, um. As of yet. The expense that that we do have from the other grants is for this year to date over here. Is the FY twenty one portion of the CARES Act funding that we expended be- between July first and December fifteenth. We're gonna have CDBG expenses over here as soon as Fifty Eighth Avenue is done. Um, and the only thing left there is the concrete work on the bus pad, so we should be seeing that in May. Transfer from fund balance. We don't project any this year. We budgeted almost five hundred million dollars for FY twenty one. To balance this budget, meaning expen- expenditures are going, are not fully covering. Covering the revenues would be three hundred and forty six thousand dollars, transfer from fund balance. Um, I assume we're gonna have at least that much in fund balance in FY twenty one, I won't say add too early though. That's revenues. Um, again, that took the longest part, that's about forty five minutes, I knew it would, so any questions on that? We can always come back and ask questions, we can always come back and 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 touch on items and everything there.
Yeah, so Mr. Tenali, going back to that interest rate, um. Any idea if that's what we need to expect for the coming fiscal year, that rates will be really low?
Yes, um, they just, uh. The Fed funds, I think, I've I've kept the same right now. Um, and I don't think they wanna touch the rates because they're, they're still trying to get out of COVID. So the economy is doing strong, I just don't see them doing anything right yet with the rates. Because that is springing investment. And if you keep the rate slow, you know, everyone says we're we're gonna climb out of it. But when you look at things like your income tax revenues, it looks like we've already climbed out of it. But then you see the high unemployment and the lower wage earners, they haven't climbed out of it. So, um. I don't think we're gonna see much change as of right now. I'm not an economist, you know, but I'm just seeing what's going on with the real estate market and how crazy the real estate market is in the, in the lending market. Um, they're hoping that generates into, well, the area issue too is. Um, you can't build anything right now, you cannot get building materials right now. If you do, if you do get building materials, um, for instance, like a two by four, which cost two dollars and thirty two cents last year. Is over eight dollars right now. Sheer plywood is as mu- once she apply was as much as going out to a nice dinner with your spouse or. Girlfriend or boyfriend, I mean, it's crazy. Um, and just the backlog of materials, of raw materials. Uh, secondary items like appliances, um, luxury items, like um, everything, automobiles. Um, so they're trying to get manufacturing up and going, so I don't think they're gonna do anything to rates. When they're already struggling on this side of the supply house over here. So, um, that's just my thoughts. But tha- at the end of the day, I don't expect any more in interest income, unfortunately. Um, so. If we were doing bonding, if we're doing large purchases. Like constructing a new town hall or acquiring large pieces of property. Now would be the time to do it because the rates are so low, go out to the bond market and we got very strong financials. Just, that's just something else to put out there, Councilman Row.
Mister, yeah, I was gonna say, uh, Mr. Tenali, uh, Councilmember Row had her hand up, so I'm glad you saw.
Thank you, Mayor James, thank you, Mr. Tenali. Um, I'm a bit confused why there isn't anything in the community legacy line item. Um, we had two uh grants that we um included. In our budget, um, this fiscal year, we had the twenty thousand dollars for the emergency grants. Would this be the appropriate place for them? I do remember that we moved, um, we took it out of the mayor and council's budget. Um, but.
It's down here.
Okay, and that's also for the, so what is community legacy?
Community legacy, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant right now that we were awarded last year to do street lighting on Fifty Seventh Avenue and on Fifty Eighth. This was something that the town clerk was working on, um, two previous town clerks. And we're waiting for the Fifty Eighth Avenue construction to be completed before we we bring them down. And I've had communication with with community legacy as well, it doesn't happen this year, we're gonna give it extended in the next fiscal year. I just don't know the timing of this right yet, so before I move this amount over here. I just wanna make sure that, you know, um, it's gonna go. And as revenue, with the grants, as revenue in, it's the same expenditure is going back out. So if we do put the hundred and fifty thousand dollars over in FY twenty two. If you're gonna get the projects done between now and the end of June, which realistically. I would say no, at this point, you know, when I, when I did the budget a month ago, there, there was a chance. Now the chances are getting slimmer and slimmer, so I may move this one fifty back over to here again. And then we'll, and then we'll, we'll be an offset in grant expenses of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this is to provide the LED lighting. Chief, do you know, uh, do you know where exactly on Fifty Seventh? Uh, Purnell's not on here, I don't know if you know exactly where.
Fifty Seventh Avenue.
It's Fifty Seventh Avenue, uh, going up towards like with Elizabeth Seaton, up to the uh, community center. So that whole stretch from basically it starts at the shopping center. And it's gonna go all the way up to the community centers where we uh, uh, looked at when the previous clerk was here. Look, Mr. Hall.
Okay, expenditure budgets. Excuse me, talking for a while, I'm piling. This is a summary of the expenditure budgets. The first. For. Lana, or the first four departments here, mayor and council, town administrator, town clerk and finance. Those are our a- a- administrative functions. So we're gonna go into the mayor and council first. They're the smallest portion of the budget, um, compared to your actual service side, which is your. Public safety, public works and any grants. I'll do a pie chart for that for next meeting, for the um, work session. Mayor and council budget, um, compensation, um, still same. Still same FICA, uh, which is seven point six five percent of the compensation. Since mayor and council are considered full-time employees or eligible for health insurance. And this is based on um enrollment in the plans. Now, a two percent increase, again, is based on enrollment. Our health insurance renews on December first. And any increases are annualized between December first and July thirtieth, I mean, sorry, June thirtieth. Um, so it might be a four percent or a five percent increase, or let's say a four percent increase, but it's only a two percent. Because we're the current rate from July one to November thirtieth, then the increase for the next seven months. We're hoping, that's another thing, I'm not sure what's going to go on with health insurance. Because of COVID, the impact on the hospitals, they were receiving Fed and state funding. So I don't know what exactly the impact was on the health, on the healthcare plans. Versus what was being covered through federal and state payment or subsidized services because of the pandemic. That's one I'm not too sure about yet, um, it's still being, you know, um, it's still being flushed out. Pension, this is through Maryland State Retirement System, and this is a seven percent contribution that the town makes. On behalf of the, um. Pay going, i- it's a little bit more than seven percent because there's a little bit of admin fee that goes in there. The town pays into the retirement plan. Workers' compensation insurance, even though we're office, you know, um. You're interacting with the public, you're on business premises, doing the, doing town business. That's a small premium for mayor and council. The largest premium obviously is going to be for your public service positions, public safety, which being the highest, and then. Thought closely left by public works, your admin staff aren't, don't carry a, a huge risk. Because, you know, we're basically, you know, doing safer jobs, safer duties. Let's go into the other general administrative costs. Professional development, we had minimal amount this year, um. Because most conferences and meetings were canceled, but there were some small online uh fees and everything. We had fifteen thousand budgeted. I don't know if everything's gonna be fully opened up with conferences next year. Uh, most are gonna be more virtual events that are discounted. Hopefully they'll open things back up because you can only do so much virtually, you gotta be, you gotta be there talking to people sometimes, you know. That interaction is priceless. Employee recognition, um, we hadn't done any this year. Mostly because we were closed and we were limited in interactions. So this is seeing everything else, restaurants were closed, um, you know, as things opened up. Uh, I think, you know, we can, we should do like a quarterly, like just luncheons or barbecues, um. Most, half to two thirds of this amount was spent on a Christmas party. Um, and it's not a huge Christmas party, we're everybody's thinking, but you know, it was a nice little, bring the spouses. Get everybody together outside of work at a restaurant, it's very nice. Hopefully we, we can start doing that again next year, I kept the amount the same. Just, you know, again, this is the mayor and council budget, I'm just going off of historical and doing some small projections. But if you all have any ideas, just please jump in, because I, I don't wanna make your budget for you and say, this is what you have, so. Um, you know, again, this is the first, this is our first real run through too, so. You know, it's not like we can't change things or add things or remove things or um, transfer from this department to that department. Council projects, this is the discretionary funding to each uh. Member of the mayor and council to give to local or organizations. And just a reminder, um, these have been largely under utilized this year, so if you have any. Ideas or anything you wanna do. Fire department donation. We were at twenty one thousand dollars uh budget, I'm sorry, we were at thirty thousand dollar budget last year, or I'm sorry. This current fiscal year, but we, but we reduced the amount because of the overage and the cost of the. Ambulance cabin chassis um for the suspension system. That was outside of the grant funding that we received for it. But I took the liberty, this again is your budget, I'm just, you know, um, I put this back to thirty thousand dollars. Um, the FY twenty two budget. Just a suggestion, based on the preliminary regs, um, coming down from. As they are talking about them even more, sum this funding up here. If you, if, if you do wanna increase the fire department donation, just not saying you have to, but just in case there's some. Other things you wanna do for the fire departments that are right next door. You can transfer funds to a qualified nonprofit, which. Bladensburg Volunteer Fire Department is, so they can, they have specific projects. So instead of maybe increasing it here on this side, if you wanna do something. Maybe take it out of this budget up here. Just in case that discussion comes up. Community grants, other, Councilmember Row, this is what you were discussing about where we um, increased the emergency residential. Re- repair grant of twenty thousand dollars, it's sitting over here. There was a six thousand dollars for the community grants, um, which we put out there again, which we haven't awarded yet. And twenty thousand dollars for emergency shelter repair grant, which we have awarded, four thousand as of March, is actually six thousand as of now. I didn't know if this program was going to be renewed or not, it was only for FY twenty one. So I kept that to six thousand dollars, if we wanna make this an ongoing program, we can. I just didn't know what the mayor and council wish was on that one. Um, seeing that we do have this money up here as well, that, that we can make a qualified grant program out of. Again, I'm not sure about that, so going back to what I do know is what we did have for six thousand dollars. The current fis- the previous fiscal year, the current fiscal year before the budget amendment. I know I'm throwing a whole lot out there, everybody, I'm sorry, it's just, you know, that's why I, I try to put everything on one page here, so. You know, um, instead of splitting this up. But again, you know, that can be talked about. And I'd really like to get some more information about this as soon as possible, and as soon as we do. Um, we have to have a separate work session around just these funds. Community events, um, we, part of the budget amendment was to transfer. Amounts out of the community events in order to fund the additional to, for the funding for the emergency residential repair grant. So that's why the budget's at ten thousand dollars, it was decreased. I mean, we've actually spent almost eight thousand of that budget now. Um, we've had had some ex- expenditures against it, things like, um. To cover the, the Yule Log Black History Month celebration, um. We, we, we were still doing events, I mean, even though when we're supposed to be, you know, closed down everything, we're still offering services. We're still, we're doing um, events, and this isn't events, and this is outside of the um. Events such as the, uh, for the um, census. So, and we do have the Mental Health Awareness Day coming up here at, at, at the end of the month. On May twenty ninth. And I did increase this to twelve thousand dollars, hoping things could be opened back up. This was a larger line item with fireworks was the main driver of it. And just not sure what's going on with the, the, the distancing, but. Our municipalities are doing fireworks, they are starting to open them up and everything, so. We'll let them, I guess, do them this year, that, this year, then we can look back and, and doing this in FY. Well, actually, this is for.
I have a question, Mr. Tenali, when you finish. Uh, so, so one thing is because things are slowly starting to open up as I look at this line item. I'm wondering if we'd wanna do something like a drive up fireworks event. Um, you know, they used to have drive-in movie theaters as, as kids that we love going to. And if, you know, we could consider doing something like that where people drive in their cars, they stay, maybe we give them snack packs and. You know, partner with Prince George's County or someone else, and, you know, we have our staff there to give everybody their stuff. And you can have multiple viewing areas, everyone doesn't even have to go to the waterfront park, you've got the ball fields and, um. Just across the river and, you know, other places, and it could be something as before that benefits the whole port town. So just something to think about there, I don't wanna just say, oh, no, we're not doing anything because. It, it, all the way up to the president, you know, folks are saying we should start thinking about opening up in a safe and smart and responsible way. So it'd be something to consider.
Um, I mean, we can go ahead and increase this line item, um, I've, I've, the fireworks vendors email me every two or three weeks. So I think they're getting hungry too, so um, hopefully it wouldn't be as much as we spent before. Uh, still is the cost of the show. Uh, because we provide our own, of course, our own public safety, um, so it's. I mean, it's something up to the council, I mean, if we wanna increase this, you know, eighteen thousand dollars, you know, to, to cover the cost of the show.
And then on the safety side too, I know the county has their inspectors come out. But then the fire department, they provide their apparatus as well, so it's not like we have to pay them for being there either. Just a thought, Councilmember Lundie?
Um, thank you, Mayor James.
Um, thank you, Mayor James, so back under the um, community events. I also want to add the uh Spring Prayer Week that we had as another event that we would do to our list of events.
Is there a budget amount that's needed, council member Lundie, because this is more so just looking at the budgetary impacts, if. It's, you know, something virtual where there's not a um, dollar cost, we wouldn't add it to this, we would do it in our full, you know, schedule of events for the year?
Right, well, as we are moving forward, probably opening back up, it probably will look a whole lot different.
Okay.
So I can um, look at that.
Did you have an amount, um, at least for now, or, okay?
Not at this time, but I definitely can put something together.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's remember out.
Thank you so much, um, Mr. Tenelli, um. As, as if, as it relates to community events, I know right now, um, I'm deeply involved in planning the. A mental health awareness, um, and I would like to have that as a budgeted item. Um, moving forward for next fiscal year, um, really looking to make sure that. That's included in the budget, and this year we are um, looking at. Um, some other costs that was not taken into account by the mayor and council budgets, it relates to like capital outlay. Um, hoping to use some of maybe those funds, but um, the projected cost for that is about fifty five hundred dollars. And that would, um, to promote the needs of um, the community for. Different events that were taking place to um, have speakers and things of that nature, um, the stage rental, uh, things of that nature. In addition, I know we were looking at um, having Ms. Blunt's um senior, senior event. And that she was looking to host in the fall, and that would be another expense. That she would be looking to, I know she had budgeted about five thousand dollars previously, but it was canceled. Um, because of COVID, um, and she wanted to move that to September, that would be the next fiscal year. Um, in addition, um, piggybacking off of what Councilwoman Lundie has stated. That the Spring Prayer Week, um, it would be nice to give small per diems to the ministers. Who are participating, so I'm sure she'll come up with some type of um, appropriate figure. Um, and I am also in favor of bringing back the fireworks celebration. Uh, which was, you know, canceled last year because of weather. I mean, the year before that because of weather, and then last year because of COVID. Um, I, I do think that the community uh definitely enjoyed that. Um, and it gave a lot of highlights as it relates to. Um, the positive community that we have and really highlighting um, our resources that we have in town. Um, it will also be nice to, in that budget, to get that um televised or broadcasted. So that for people who still are not comfortable, if this is something that we're gonna do in July, which it sounds like, looks like all the members of the. Town council want to do it by shaking their heads, for the individuals who are not too comfortable with going out in person. We could have it live streamed, and I think that would be, you know, very nice to have a professional be able to. Live broadcast that, so since we are spending funds and resources on that, all members. Of, you know, our residents and businesses and visitors who wanna see that, have the opportunity. Um, to see it and experience it, thank you so much.
Um, let me ask the mayor and council this, and this is also to the chief as well, um. Since we are doing FY twenty two budget, uh, July will be in FY twenty two budget. Um, are we looking at possibly doing something in a couple of months? Or just something like a September celebration, like a, you know, Liberty Weekend, I don't know, I'm just putting it out there, or, you know.
I was, yeah, great cu- uh, question, Mr. Tenelli, I had envisioned fourth of July, just. Looking at the number of vaccinations that are being distributed and where we are. Um, in addition to that, you have people who going into the fall were not as comfortable being out. And so slowly confidence is building, again, not that people are letting their guards down, but just with the vaccinations. Um, more broad acceptance and respect for wearing the mask and social distancing, so I would envision. July fourth, but I'll turn it over to my colleagues in case they had a different timeline in mind.
And, and this is, and this also is dependent on what Maryland National Capitol Park and Planning are, are going to allow us to do with the waterfront property. As well, um, I think I'm willing to defer this maybe to the chief until. He can have a conversation with them and see if the logistics, talk about the logistics of something like this can happen.
Well, I, I just think we still need to follow the CDC guidelines on the uh, the large gathering. Uh, I know things are rolling back and things are opening up, but uh, at the same time, we still have to make sure that we keep people safe. And uh, but I'm all for having the, the event, that, that we just have to figure out how we go about. Strategizing, but we can get people in there safely to have a good time, view the fireworks. Uh, without having them too close getting exposed. And what events will we have, usually we have like the moon bounce and all of that kinda stuff, will it just be fireworks and then they go? Uh, or will we have vendors down there for refreshments? Or they, do they just stay in the car? And then, you know, just some things to think about as we roll back uh, the CDC guideline.
Thank you, chief, so just to answer the question, if, whether it's Rod or someone else you connect with. If they could let us know what the capacity would look like, again, we would just want this reviewing. The fireworks, almost like a, a drive in movie theater, if you will, so if they say. Based on having every other space in the facility filled, that would be, let's say, a hundred cars. Um, whatever, you know, that maximum looks like for them would be helpful to know, but. Good questions, we definitely would not have moon bounces and all those activities that we're, we're accustomed to having in the past, we're just trying to provide. Something for folks to look forward to, let's say you all are cooking out with your families on fourth of July, and this is just an evening activity. That we could have in the evening, and again, would look at other viewing sites, so. You know, if we had to talk to the owners of local shopping centers in the community to host viewing sites there. Um, I know there are certain elevations in town which have excellent viewing points. Like Bladensburg Commons, for example, and so those residents could view from there, they wouldn't have to go anywhere, in fact, if you ever. Um, visit that hill, you can see several fireworks displays throughout the area, so the thought would just be a limited number at the park. Again, we could let our port towns partners know that this is happening, so they could have viewing sites in their areas as well. But because it's launched, you know, from that um, MNPC, um, see, location, we just wanna. See what, if anything, they would allow, and we'll just work based on that, yes, sir.
Uh, in addition to the, the cause, you know, you, once the word get out, you know, I, I just think. Additionally, we won't have people trying to walk up. Because when the word get out, you know, and i- it's so many ways that they can get into the park. That it may be a little challenging for, you know, for public safety to make sure we keep walkers away. You know, we can ask them to leave, but you know, um, that would just be the challenge that we would have to also take into consideration. Is people uh, not following the rules, and they're showing up um, through the cuts in the other places.
As my brother Lundie's got a question.
Thank you, um, so I wanted to. And I, I, I receive all of that, and I definitely agree with everything that everyone is saying, I wanna go back to the community events. Um, so I liked the mayor's idea with the drive in, and I wanted the drive in um, celebration. You know, sparkles or what have you, and call, you know, sparkles, whatever, but anyway. Um, so how soon do we have to submit proposals for the twenty two budgets, is it, is it gonna be to the end of this? How soon would you want a proposal or something for additional community events?
Um.
Mr. Tenelli.
I would say through, through the end of this month.
Okay.
And going back, couple things, oh, okay, that is your question?
That's it, yes.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, I wanna cut you off, um, with the July fourth fireworks, of course, I love planning that, um. That was a great idea, I'd let everybody embrace that, um, the, the July fourth weekend. Yeah, Thursday the first, Friday the second, Saturday the third, Sunday's the fourth, Monday's the fifth. Now, we gotta see what availability the vendors have too. The grant is on July fourth, but we're always, you know, I, I like to keep it plus or minus a day or two. Um, ju- just for flexibility, and as chief, you know, talks with. Uh, parking planning, what their availability is, what their preferences, and also as we talk about. Viewing areas, what days of the week or weekend are best suited for that, so there are some variables here, you know, um. And we're gonna need a little bit of time just to check these out before we dive all the way into it, um, so, um. But going back to line item, from what I hear, I want to, I was keeping a tally of whatever I was talking about. This was at one point a forty five thousand, um. I'm sorry, that was a thirty thousand plus public safety of fifteen thousand, um, I would suggest bringing this up to. Probably close to forty two, I, I would say to forty thousand dollars to cover everything that we are talking about. Um, I may even take it to forty two thousand. Um, I might put forty two thousand as a placeholder to give you a, a chance to get back to me, uh, especially what council member Lu- Lundie talked about.
Um, I just wanna made a, um, just a. Comment, uh, you know, this from what I've experienced in the past. Okay, if we have anything with like the seniors, remember we got three senior homes plus a senior in town. We have to include them in, or else we're gonna get some uh, complaints about that. So whenever we do senior, you gotta make sure that everybody in town is invited to the event.
I agree.
Another thing is, if we're doing anything to relate it with a church or praying and stuff like that, and spending money, remember, it's taxpayers' money. And we may also might get complained about that, remember the peace cross, we had a, that was a fight that was like over five years because it was. Public, you know, it's public money or public property using God, and, and some people, not everybody feels about God the way we do. So you also gotta remember that, you know, that be careful with that kinda stuff, because they could even get the town sued. If we are spending taxpayer money on certain things.
Yeah, thank you, council member Mendoza, because we are bound to um, abide by separation of church and state. So um, one of the notes that I had here was just to check with Suellen about, I don't know that we can give stipends to. Ministers that i- is probably a stretch, but if you're partnering with an organization or they're um, leading an event. That tends to be the safest way to do those kinds of things. I think council member Blunt, I see your hand.
Yeah, um, um, yeah, Mendoza, thank you, but I do plan to invite seniors, um.
No, 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 I was just saying that we gotta make sure, because sometimes the senior that live in the houses, they do complain to me, because they complained to us before.
I know, I, I see, I gotta get a list for. A list of seniors in that area, so if you know any, please, um, send them to Jac- Diane, so she can get the names and phone numbers or email.
Okay, good.
But I was asking, do anybody know how many people that can fit on a David Harrington's, like parking area, that little. Little um, area?
Before COVID or going COVID?
Well, before COVID.
Before COVID, you could fit like four hundred people there.
But then I'm good, because I, I, that would be a hundred and fifty, so we good.
Yeah, you're good.
Good, okay, that's all.
Thank you, council member Blunt. Back over to you, Mr. Tenelli, I don't think I see the other hands, let me keep scrolling, make sure I'm not missing anybody, okay, yeah, back to you.
Lundie, you okay, you're. Your hand's still up, I just wanna make sure we answered your question, okay. Um, seriously, some projects, uh, we're, we're talking about our values, um, seniors. Um, we do give a fifteen hundred dollar donation to the three senior housing.
Yes.
Uh, complexes, for them just to fund their own events that, you know, you know. So they know they're part of the town, saying here, you know, here's something for you to plan something fun. Um, it's a small amount, you know, it, it, it's been held constant for years, I mean, we can talk about this amount. I mean, again, th- this is your budget, I'm just presenting to you historical, uh, council member Blunt?
Yeah, um, we don't, can I get my five hundred dollars back?
You're what?
Can I get my five hundred dollars back?
Where are you looking?
Projects, oh, that's not, yeah, forty five, it was five thousand.
Uh, no, it was the, this line item here.
Senior citizens' projects, that's not me?
No.
Okay.
No, you, you're talking about the council projects, I know, it, it, it's close, it, it sounds very similar, I'm sorry, yes. But yes, you still have your council project money up here, yes.
And I have a question.
Yes, council member Lundie.
Thank you, so being the um, what is the pastor or lay council lead. Um, historically, what did that organization do and where, how were they supported by the town budget?
I don't remember us doing much with them, like, like money wise, but they did do a few things with Ficklin, I remember, he used to do stuff with them, and they. We got invited to stuff, but.
But he.
I mean, not putting that much money into.
I, he did with the pastor lay, they did their, um, I think it's Martha the King program, I wanna say. They actually only did refreshments.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And I, I, and they paid some, they did pay some of the people that was performing, but ma- mainly. They, he did a lot out of his pocket. He did a lot of, out of his pocket for that particular program, but I know they paid for refreshments.
I remember us putting that much money into it, because I remember Ficklin, because he was big in that.
Oh, gosh.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, but yeah, he paid some of the performers, he did do that.
Wow. And council member, uh, the, the, like, uh, those expenses I would classify under community events. Because that is a community program, um.
So what we need to put some money, so adding this money to, to, to be aside for those type of programs that will fall under. This particular um, area, that would be, as you increase the budget, you know, tentatively forty two thousand dollars would be the total, that's like a placeholder. That's where the refreshments and paying um, performers or what have you, or even if it's sponsored by an organization. Um, you know, if you wanna give away, um, giveaway items or whatever, and, and an event that residents would attend, that's what that will come out of. You wanna do t-shirts and stuff like that.
And I'll tell you what, uh, I would suggest we do for the next budget work session, is actually have a, I'm trying to find my, my previous year's community events budget. Where we can go ahead and break all these down, okay, so we'll have a itemized li- listing of per event. Um, we, we know what we're going into, what. We've been guilty of in the past is we won't participate in everything, and we love our community events. Um, problem is just staying to those community events, because there are a lot of, lot during the year that come up, and we've seen it, like, hey. Can you partner with us on this, you know, well, we didn't really plan for it, but that sounds great, let's go ahead and do it. And a lot of that does come up during the year, so we probably wanna do some um, unallocated funds in the community events just for that. Council member, I'm sorry.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tenelli, so um, I would, um, and so I just wanted to be clear. But I wasn't saying to pay the pastors to come and pray, I was saying to sponsor activities because. We did have like a student violinist that, that would, it would have been nice to give her a small um, per diem, or, you know, just a small something. Um, we had many different people that, uh, we had a, a resident, a senior resident who sang a solo. Um, that we highlighted, and so to um, really, um, it, it wouldn't be paying somebody to pray, I just want to clarify that. It would be to support the actual event as refreshments and the light. It would be to support the actual event as refreshments and the light. Um, and so I'm sure, um, since I was a part of it, uh, Councilmember Lundy, I, I can support you in working on. Um, that proposed projected budget, Mr. Tenelli, is there a particular, um, budget, like? That you have?
No, I mean, something like for, I mean, some, something for like the stipends that we're talking about, stipends, you know, we're talking like my hair stipend. I, I think of like one fifty or three hundred, or one fifty to four fifty, something like that.
Thinking less than that.
Okay, so, something like that, um, I would do like a, you know, general category of say like maybe four thousand dollars unallocated. For, 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 I'm gonna say pop-up events, community events for stipends.
But that way it will give us liberty. Throughout the year to be able to.
I don't need a detail, I mean, we don't know what, you know. We don't know how much we're gonna be open, allowed to do versus fully open, so I don't wanna just keep it, you know, um, just in there, but.
Okay, hold on, Councilmember Lundy, I was not done, um, and just to respond. I just want to remind all members of the council that we pray every council meeting, so. If, if we are not sep- if we're separating church and state, then maybe we need to look at that, so. Mayor James, if you, um, when you do talk to, um, our, our town attorney, if you could, you know, just under. You know, understand more, I would like to get some guidance as it relates to that as well, because, um. That just presents a conflict if we're, because we pray every council meeting. And so if we're not gonna be praying, then we don't, we probably need to look into that. I just wanted us to make sure that we're not putting ourselves at risk.
Thank you, Councilmember Row, just real quick, Mr. Mendoza, that's the reason why the guidance is you can't say in the name of, you're supposed to. You know, in the prayer. In your name we pray, in that way, you're not violating anything. I know from time to time, because some people, their faith is very strong and, you know. They may forget to do that, but the appropriate way is not to, you know, use a particular name when, when we pray. And, and Sue Ellen has been very clear on that. Like Councilmember Mendoza, jump in there.
Yeah, we, that was brought up before, but the prayers. And even though we don't say in the name of Jesus, it's, that still might be wrong, but nobody has called us out on it also. You know, I mean, like, like, we, we're not spending any money, we're just saying prayers, so if, if it ever brought up, we would just, we, we would just stop, you know what I mean?
Right, Councilmember Lundy?
Yes, um, so, this is the first time I'm hearing about the appropriate way is to pray in your name we pray. So that's good information to have on that particular guidance, so my other thing, Mr. Tenelli, is, um. The, I am also the lead for the going green team, going green team, or the green team, just say the green team. And so I definitely would like to do some things around that as well, so that's something else for you to consider, what that may look like going forward. Um, some things we can do, um, creative things we can do in the town of Bladensburg. I know Edmundston and Coleman Manor, they have a very progressive, um, things that they're doing, they're going green teams. And I've researched other municipalities and they're doing some wonderful things as well. So that's something else that we might want to just look at as well, what can we do here in the town of Bladensburg as it relates to, um, the green team? And to include some, you know, to get more people involved in that, you know, so maybe, yeah, so that's, I want to put that out there. Because, you know, I'm gonna be the lead for these teams, you know, I know I've gotta be doing something and to do that, you gotta have some budget support.
Yeah, and so, you know, we will come, I, I will come back with a, you know, proposed line item budget. And we can just start go- going after from there. Okay, due to time constraints, I wanna get through this, um. Well, for the town meetings. This is, as you can see, the video production and recording, and now we are doing live streaming. Uh, wireless communications, uh, this is cell phone allotment. Computer expense, uh, I just keep this kinda consistent or, uh, for replacement costs of laptops and repairs. We could not use this at all, or we could be, or it could be doubled, but good thing is it's a small amount. Fuel and vehicles repaired maintenance, um. This was removed and any vehicles are either under public safety or under public works. Membership, this rounded down, it should be twelve thousand dollars. Um, this is the annual membership for the three big ones, MML, National League of Cities, and the. Metropolitan Washington Council of Governments. Capital Outlay, I don't have any assigned here, um, we have nine thousand dollars on the budget this year. Um, that's underutilized right now. And, uh, but right now we have none identified. So that's the mayor council budget and actually decreased before thi- this adjustment here with the community events. That, um, actually decreased. Because of the changes here between FY twenty-one and FY twenty-two. So we got through the summary budget, the revenues, and we got into our first administrative budget, uh, for the mayor and council. We have a couple, we have a couple other departments left there on the administrative. Um, I'm up against my seven o'clock, I've actually gone over my seven o'clock, um, a lot of times. So Mayor, I'm gonna defer to you and the chief, what you all wanna do.
So, Mr. Tenelli, we usually break this up into two sessions anyway, just so we can take our time and go through them. And looking at the schedule that you shared with the council, the next meeting date looks like May seventeenth. Which is two weeks from today at five thirty.
And we can also put discussion, general discussion on the work session next week as well. So.
But let me just double check and make sure everyone, um, this again is from the schedule Mr. Tenelli shared before, does five thirty still work? For, um, May seventeenth? And then, Mr. Tenelli, if that works, if you wouldn't mind, the way you sent the agenda and the calendar invite with the link out. Would be helpful if we could get that again?
Okay. Um, just, uh, also for future, um, for next week's work session and. Mayor and council meeting, again, it's gonna be the, oh, I'm sorry, I, I jumped ahead, Councilmember Row.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tenelli, um. I put it in the chat, it would be very helpful if we get this printed, like a piece of paper. Because like my eyes kinda hurting. Because yes, it's big enough, but to be able to like jot notes and be able to, so when we do meet again, if your, um, proposed. It's printed and given to members of the council, that would be greatly appreciated, thank you so much.
Sure, and actually, um, I think it was given out, uh, the April meeting, um, as well, printed, and they've been put in your box.
I have a copy, yeah, I'm not sure. That's okay, we'll get copies.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Tenelli, I'm sure you're, of course, yes.
Thing, um, because the budget is done by a resolution, um, we have to have a first reading of the budget. At the May meeting, so the resolution looks like this, it's not tying in, it's not tying into it, it's just the first read. And that can be amended and then gets read for a second and final draft at the June meeting. Um, so it looks like, I'm just gonna pull this up here real quick, just so everyone sees it. And I'm gonna run my time there. So the O two, O three, O four, um. It will look like this, that, uh, will have to be read at the mayor and council meeting for May. In order to have the budget adopted by June. And it's just saying that the tax rate, the main thing is the, the tax rate. But it doesn't say anything about figures, says it just, you know, to approve the general operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. Doesn't give the amounts, it just reads it right now, so it's in discussion and everything, so by the time we do approve the budget. With the, the ordinance is already into a second reading, if that makes sense.
Yep, it's procedural.
Yeah, so.
Yep, and Mr. Tenelli, uh, hang on for me, Councilmember Lundy?
Yes, um. Okay, no, can you leave that, so I understand that, um, it's procedural. So, um, this is the, this will be the first reading, so would it be appropriate to say, oh. Thank you, would it be appropriate to say to the audience to approve, um, the first reading of the budget? So we can be very specific, because when you have things in writing, you're held legally to this. So, I don't, procedural for the town or procedural for, because you know, stuff in writing can be held up, can be liable in court and everything too. So can we modify that to say the first reading of maybe a, the, the draft budget, because it's not approved yet? The operating budget hasn't been approved, so is it a way, what is your suggestion, can we, my suggestion is we amend the language to make it more reflex. Reflective of what we're actually doing and the process that we're actually in as we go through this phased approach.
And the mayor and chief can talk to, uh, our council about that, how to, you know, correctly do the resolution. This is just a draft from previous years that, you know, so.
Right, because our normal process is we have the readings while we're still continuing to work through the budget. But it is not voted on or finalized until the very end, but we still have to notify the public through that ordinance. That it is being worked on, and that's pretty much what that is, a notice to the public. So I'd hate to vote on something right then and there, as you said, Councilmember Lundy, because we're still making changes, you know, like the, eh, for example, what you talked about. That's gonna be a line item, that's being changed, and so we'll check with, we'll check with Mrs. Ferguson about that, but this is the.
About that top part, Mayor James, where it says, that bolded part, because we're saying these are particular phases in the first reading, so I just wanted to make a suggestion. That we would add that language.
Okay, thank you so much.
Accurate statement of what we're actually doing, I mean.
Okay, thank you, so we'll check with Ms. Ferguson and, and, um, make sure that we're compliant, okay?
And as far as printed copies of the budget, um, I mean, this is still, you know, I, I wanna say in raw format. But I'd hate to put something out there, you know, I, I, I normally do versions at the bottom, you know, version by date. First draft, you know, this draft date, um, you know, so I don't know what the mayor and council's thought, thoughts are about putting out a. True preliminary draft budget at this point.
If you do, I have last years, I've been comparing back and forth, so it is helpful when you put the date at the bottom. As of such and such date, because it is helpful when, you know, preparing for meetings if we. Have time to lay them all out and just look at the transitions, so yes, it, it, is everyone okay with that?
I mean, for public consumption too, so.
Yes, it makes it very helpful, I think.
Okay, because, you know, of course, I do wanna put this out, I mean, this is, you know, what we're doing every day, so, you know. And I, of course, I could talk about forever, but when people see it as well.
And it's helpful too, if someone missed, say, this meeting and they see it, you know, two weeks from now, it's clear, this is as of such and such date. So there are changes, or it will have changes that are, weren't reflected in this original copy that we have.
And I'm gonna use what we're talking about right now before making any changes, so. This is what we're sharing before making the, you know, increasing the community events, because I want you all, I, I want the same thing going out there by seeing now.
Thank you so much, Mr. Tenelli, I know, uh, we have a lot to start thinking through, um, and we haven't even got to the other budgets. Uh, before we adjourn, Councilmember Row has a, her comment or question?
Thank you, Mayor James, um, I would like to make a suggestion, um, I know we did miss a budget, um. Um, and so I feel like we're a little bit behind, um, I want to see if. You know, if everyone is available, if we could just add an hour on to our work session, like at the top of it. Um, a work session, so then we would possibly, you know, get some time back, I don't know if our schedule permits. But I feel like if we would have, um, you know, had our, I know we didn't have, um, consensus. Across the board because, you know, of scheduling issues, but just a suggestion. Because I feel like we are a little bit behind because we missed that, that budget, so that's, you know, if our schedule permits. So instead of starting at five thirty, maybe starting at four thirty and running from four thirty to five thirty. And then going in at five thirty to our work session, um, if, you know, if it's the pleasure of the council, thank you.
Thank you, uh, for that suggestion, Councilmember Row, um, and this is looking at Monday, May tenth and moving up an hour. Um, I know I would not be available due to work schedules, I'm not sure if others are. But, um, definitely understand wanting to get an additional meeting in, um, because we did initially have April twenty-sixth identified. Based on, um, our current pace, we've covered a good chunk of it. And we still have to go through all of the other budgets outside of mayor and council, so we should be fine with that ninety-minute window. However, if we could, um, agree upon a third opportunity just to make sure. Um, I think that would be useful, I just, I know I can't commit to adding another hour on May tenth. But, you know, if that works, um, for the majority, then that's what it is. Um, so if we could follow up for scheduling, uh, via email and get that locked in in the next day or so. Because I also want us to come to agreement so we can notify the public and really get the word out and get more people to tune in. And participate, in the past, we've traditionally held one session on a Saturday morning, we do two in the evenings and then one Saturday. So I would, um, even propose doing it on a, a Saturday morning, if possible, from, you know, ten to eleven thirty. And sometimes it, it gives people who are working during the week and not able to focus on this, an opportunity to come to that Saturday session. But of course, as you know, sometimes people are busy and they still may not show up, but I just feel like if we do our part to give every opportunity, weeknights. Weekend, we're doing our best effort to, uh, make it available to our constituents. So if, Mr. Tenelli, could you please help us follow up on trying to get, um, a date and time for an additional. Meeting, just to keep us on track, um, if so, that would be helpful.
Yeah, um, Saturdays, uh, you know, we should do the, the Saturday meetings, I think we did them on, um. I wanna say, uh, two Saturdays in a row or Friday and Saturday, but that's more for c- c- uh, community input. And, but we can use that time for reviewing this, I mean, um. You know, if this Saturday, um, it, it's, I mean, we're flexible, you know, I could talk about. You know, we can talk about budgets all day long, I love it, you know, so.
Yeah, so I know I saw a note also from one of my colleagues, so if, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Tenelli, just checking on. Saturday, May eighth and Saturday, May fifteenth, just to see what.
Looks like fifteenth might be the better day, um, kinda splits it up, and I think there's, there's gonna be more availability. Looks like Councilmember Row, you said you, you couldn't do the eighth, um.
Yeah, I'm working on the eighth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, fifteenth, yeah, I mean, working at fifteenth and then a couple days, we get back together on the seventeenth.
Yes, I agree, Keith Collinson is Mother's Day weekend, that's why I'm working. I do something for my, I do something for my mothers that I, um, that I support. Thank you, yes.
All right, well, if that, um, is the final item, then I will call for a motion to adjourn, please. I'm sorry, Councilmember Blunt?
Can someone send us breakfast that morning?
Not on taxpayer dollars. We'll find a sponsor. Someone can donate some food. I'll send you a virtual breakfast, how's that?
No Krispy Kreme.
No calories, because it's all virtual. All right, with that, may I have a motion to adjourn tonight's work session? Moved by Councilmember Mendoza, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Row, any discussion? Hearing another, none other than the breakfast, right? Uh, hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I. Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you all so very much, have a good. The I's have it, thank you all so very much, have a good night, and again, appreciate everyone's hard work, take care.